I'd like to call the meeting to order. Um, Dr. Colavita, or Dr. Mr. Colavita, would you take our wrong call?
Neither did I. I'll take it. Ms. Driver.
Here.
Ms. Genovacy.
Here.
Mr. Herbert.
Here.
Ms. Lynn Thorst.
Here.
Mr. Mason.
Here.
Mr. Resnick.
Here.
Mr. Sewicki.
Here.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Hopewell Valley Regional Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof communicated to the Hopewell Valley News, The Times, and the Trentonian on January 6, 2022. This meeting notice was also sent to Comcast Cable and Verizon Files. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education, and the meeting is being videotaped for the purposes of Board review, future reference, preparation of the minutes, and viewing on Comcast, Channel 19, Verizon Files Channel 32, and the school district website, www.hvrsd.org. Will you please join me in the flag salute? Okay. So, I'd like to approve the minutes for the previous meeting, or August 22nd meeting, July 18th meeting, sorry. Do we need a second? Motion and second, please?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Or abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, so we're going to not have a Board President review or report today, but we will have one from Dr. Therese.
This was something that we wanted to address last year, which was revisiting our mission statement. This mission statement still guides everything that we do, but I wanted to remind the community that we will be sending out opportunities for you to weigh in on whether or not we need to work on this mission statement, that we need to go deeper. I think we may want to go deeper on some of the things that we have here. So we just wanted to mention that this still guides us, but we want to revisit this with the community. So stay tuned for more information about that. Just quickly, I wanted to just go through some things that I sent out in my welcome back letter. We are looking forward to having a great school year, returning back to our new normal. So we are working on really building relationships with our students and the community. In our next meeting, you're going to see some information shared, probably October. We're going to have this commie come and share the attitudes and behavior survey results. We probably will have someone come from the survey and kind of talk about the data that we got from the students. It was very telling that we really do need to work on this. You know, we didn't have that time together last year as much as we could have with COVID, the interruptions in the year previous. So we're looking forward to getting back to a new normal schedule. And we're also energized and very excited about working with our community and our students to make this school district the best school district we can make it. Work on that together. Next slide. Okay, so returning to the new normal is masks are optional, and I see folks wearing their masks when they need to and not when they're not, they don't need to. We're asking that everyone respects individual rights, including our teachers and our support staff, who wants to wear masks or not. Be aware that the mask policy can change at the New Jersey Department of Health or Ed's. We put those policies back in place because the pandemic has come back and in a way that we do need to go back to masking. But for now, they are optional. We are asking that you continue to keep your kids home if they're sick. Please don't send them to school if they're having any symptoms that mirror that of COVID or flu or any of the other respiratory diseases until you're able to rule those out. You should also not be sending them to school with a fever. As in the past, if they have a fever, they need to be cured that fever for 24 hours before they can return. And if you test your child and you find out that he or she has COVID, they have COVID, then they do need to isolate for five days and then wear a mask when they return. We are no longer quarantining at this time. Again, these things may come back if the New Jersey Department of Health says so, but right now, you do need to isolate if you have COVID otherwise. We're not isolating folks for close to class pack anymore. We still have the, the return to play policy in place. Our school physician is still in support of making sure that our students have been positive with COVID, have experienced COVID, that they're ready to return to play. And you can reach out to your school nurse to walk you through that process, parents, and also Mr. Becker, if you have any questions. But it's really something that the parent can manage with the child, but that is still in place right now. And then finally, we're just encouraging you again, if you're eligible for the vaccines, we encourage you to consider getting them. Talk to your physicians about if that's right for you or your child, and that's all of our vaccines, not just COVID, right? Because we're seeing that some of these child effects, diseases that we thought were eradicated, like chicken pox and measles, and now we're finding COVID on the water or making a comeback. So if you can do this, we really strongly suggest that you talk to your physicians and get vaccinated if you can. All right, so I made, I had everybody's hair on fire, it's my fault, but I've heard it this better. But yes, we still have AM and PM buses. We have not, we have not done away with our PM buses, we're going to bring your kids to school and back. But we don't have, what we don't have this, again, this year, at least right now, is the late buses at the middle of the high school for the enrichment and sports. We are trying to do that, we still don't have enough bus drivers, but we will do that as soon as we can. So it's not off the table forever, and may not be for the year, but right now, we're still in a place where we can't provide the late extracurricular buses. We'll communicate any changes if that comes up. Of course, offerings. We're also having problems staffing some of our, our electives. We've had to collapse some sections, so we're not able to offer all of the course offerings right now. They're still in our program of studies, but hopeful that they, they will come back in the future. But right now, if we don't have the teaching staff, we just, we simply can't run those sections. So I know that that affected Chinese, it affected some science and math classes, but we'll keep working on it. It's very hard to hire a Chinese teacher, any Chinese teacher. So, but we're, we'll keep our eyes out, hopefully be able to get that in the future. Lunches, over the last, I think it was two years, Bob, we were offering free lunch to every student. This was a federally funded program. It is no longer, so lunches are going to return to the previous lunch procedures. The business office will be sending out a letter to the community explaining the lunch options, the cost, but we still have available for those families who need it, free and reduced lunch. There's an application process for that. You can reach out to your school principal, your counselor, the school secretaries in the buildings to get that to you as well. And please let your principal or your counselor know, because sometimes there's a lag time between when that, that, that application is approved. We're going to make sure your child gets lunch in the meantime, so we're able to work through that, that process. And any families, we still encourage them, if you're suffering from food insecurity, please reach out to us. The food pantry is still here at the board office, and I included that information in my welcome back letter. So we want to see you involved, we're looking forward to getting you back in the buildings, back to school, and I will be in person, I know you all want to be in your buildings, with your teachers this year, and see your classrooms. We will be encouraging you to get involved and get in the volunteer appearance and to get back, get back into the buildings. We like to see our parents and our community members get involved in these committees that we have. We have our PTO still, we still have our diversity, equity, and inclusion committees in each building. I should have the HBF up here, I'm sure they're still looking for volunteers. And we also are going to be starting a parent group or a support group for some of our parents, some of our families who have lost family members over the last three years. We lost a lot of folks. And so at the request of one of our parents, we actually have a counselor that's interested in running this support group. We're going to try to put that in place and get that started as a starter. And then, as always, we'll offer educational forums and webinars for you to learn alongside our students. And that's all I have for my report. Have a great day. Last big holiday before we're all back to school.
Rosetta, if I, if I could make one request, could you please share with the Board the list of courses that we're unable to run because of staffing concerns? I'd be curious to see, you know, the list of what we're not able to run that we hope to be able to run. Thank you.
And I also have three questions. The late buses, the last time we had a fairly normal situation, so I don't know exactly when was the end of last year, or we have to go pre-COVID, do we have any data on how heavily utilized those were?
Can you use the microphone?
Oh, sorry. So the question was for the late buses that we're not able to run. Do we have data on how heavily utilized those were the last time we had a normal situation? So I don't know if that was last year, at the end of last year, or if we have to go pre-COVID.
I don't think they've, they haven't run since COVID.
Right, so that's why I'm asking.
We have, we have some data, I don't have it handy, but we have it.
Right, no, I'm not assuming, but when you have a chance, if you could share that with the Board. And then I had a clarifying question on New Jersey law on, on vaccinations, not the COVID ones, just the regular. Are there requirements for kids to be vaccinated to be able to attend school in New Jersey?
There are requirements, and folks can have religious exceptions.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So did you want the list of the courses now? I'll put it back to you.
Oh, not necessary now, just if you could share it with the Board. Yeah.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Therese. So next, we're going to have turf field replacement.
I'm going to complain, Trip, you still haven't removed that logo.
I know. It's part of their thing.
I tried, it didn't look right when I whetted it out.
I'm an Eagles fan too. Little one. I'm an Eagles fan too, so it, it pains me, trust me.
You upside down, because he's a Giants fan.
Oh, well, he's got a whole nother kind of pain. They could be competing for the Jets, so who's the worst in New York? Anyway, good evening, everybody, thank you for allowing me to do this presentation today. You think you're going to find it very important, because it's taken a lot of time to go through and research. This is a very, you know, valuable investment, and hopefully it's for the long term, a lot longer than what we have presently. The turf right now is falling apart, so we need to get this done for a safety issue.
Yeah, it seems, before he goes, it just seems like yesterday when we were just installing it and dedicating it, and now it's, it's got to be replaced.
So this is research from Mercer County and also from Dallas, Texas. And I'll explain in a little bit why Dallas, Texas. But these are two turf fields that are from around our area. The one on the left is Lawrence, you can click it, six-year-old turf. You can take a look and see how it's very matted, looks, you know, looks like my, you know, 11-year-old woke up and his hair is all over the place. That's what it looks like. On the right, you have Robbinsville's turf, you can see a lot of the black areas, those, that's the, the rubber that they use for the infill. You can see that coming up. These are both field turf fields, again, five and six years old. The way it's going, I'd be surprised if they made it to 10. Next slide. Field on the left is another field, I think it's West Windsor North, that's four years old. Again, you can see the black coming through, the turf is laying down, looks matted, looks used, it's only four years old. But then you have the turf on the right, and that's one of the turf fields I saw when I was in Dallas, and that's Kane Middle School. That's a seven-year-old turf compared to a four-year-old turf. This is West Windsor South, this is, so the main, the main problems of a turf field are always going to be around lacrosse circles, they're the worst. The, the goalies beat them up, they, they dig them out, you can see the, how the turf is matted down around the, the blue circle there, a lot of black rubber showing. But on the right, again, another middle school that's, again, seven years old, doesn't even look like it's been touched. And the reason that I was in Dallas was because a lot of the fields, this is Hellis, the turf that, you know, I'm recommending is a Dallas company. They have a lot of turf fields in, in the south, not only in Texas, but all in the south. The issue is, I really wanted to see fields that had lacrosse on it, and lacrosse is not super huge in Texas. Football, I could show you a million of them, but lacrosse, soccer, you know, lacrosse mainly is, is tough. But this has everything which we have, and that's why I want to see it. So these are the fields that I saw, because I wanted lacrosse on there, I wanted soccer, I wanted football, the main sports that we have. So again, you can see Utley Middle School, turf looks perfect, it's seven years old. So these are, if you want to exit out of this and then play it, because it's tough to play it in. The one on the left, West Windsor North, that's actually four years, but you can see, again, how I'm pushing it, and then the turf just lays right back down. It's tough to keep the turf up. But if you go to the next one, this is Frontier Park, this is Prosper Independent School District. You can see it stands straight up and stays up. And I did bring samples tonight for everybody, if you want to pass these around. So the first, the first sample here, the small one, this is your field turf. This is what a lot of the Mercer County schools and schools in New Jersey have. Field turf is, is up here, I forget where it's at, but this is a lot of your field turf fields. So you can feel it, again, it lays down pretty easy, but you can also feel it's very abrasive. And then this is the Hellis turf. And I'll talk about why it's different a little bit, but you can feel how soft it is, and when you, when you put your hand through it, again, it stays up, and it doesn't even have any of the rubber in it. So on the left, that's Robbinsville's field, Robbinsville's five years old. You can see how the shedding is going, there's white lines everywhere, you can see the, the black rubber. And then you have Frontier Park, which, again, is the Prosper Independent School District down in Texas, and that field is, is five years old as well. So this is a five-year-old turf against a five-year-old turf, and you can see the difference. So why Hellis? First and foremost, they do not have any failed fields in the country. If you, you know, listen into, if you were around, you listen to the news, Field Turf had a lot of issues. Field Turf is a major company, but they had a lot of failed fields, not only in New Jersey, but across the country. Their fields failed. So Hellis has no failed fields in the country.
Trip, can you talk a little bit about what makes it a failed field?
The fibers start falling apart, they break up easy. The two, the two main things that destroy turf are use and the sun. And a lot of the fields from Field Turf broke down from the sun. They just basically disintegrated. So there was really not a whole lot left, and you just, it was, it was black rubber everywhere. There was no, there was no turf because the sun disintegrated it. So that's why they failed. They've said they fixed their issue, but again, Hellis has no failed fields in the country. Also, Hellis manufactures their turf, and they also install their turf. A lot of your turf companies will manufacture the turf, but they also have a company that installs it. So Field Turf uses Land Tech to install their turf. What ends up happening is sometimes there's an issue, a failed field, and the installer blames the turf company, the turf company blames the installer, and it's a fight back and forth. Hellis, they do everything. We do not deal with anybody else but Hellis. They make the turf, they install the turf. It's them. So if something's wrong, they fix it, because they have nobody else to blame. Something else different about Hellis and Field Turf is Hellis uses less infill. Your infill is, is sand underneath and then the crumb rubber, those black little pellets. They only use six pounds, and the fiber weight for the Hellis turf is 46 ounces. So if you were to look at the turf, Scott, if you can hold up the Hellis turf, sorry. If you flip the back. So how turf is made, they have that rubber back, and then they have a four-inch piece of turf that they slide through and back, so they loop the back. So one piece of turf is two blades on the front, so you can see how it's looped through. So 46-ounce weight for the turf is measured in, in square, square yards. So for, so the more ounces, the better. So you'll see it's, it's more fuller. Field turf uses a lot less, they use nine pounds of infill, and their fiber weight is 33 to 39 ounces. So it's less fiber, more infill. So if you've ever watched a game on a Field Turf field, and, and a lot of fields actually, and you see, especially soccer, you'll see them kick the ball, and you'll see this splash up, that's all the crumb rubber that, that's being splashed up. And they use a lot more infill with the Field Turf. So what makes this turf so different? It's a patented technology. It's relatively new. I think the oldest field is nine years old, but it wasn't around anywhere where I went. Again, I wanted to see lacrosse, I wanted to see a multipurpose field, not just a field for football, because that should look great. So the Helix technology that they use, if you noticed when you were looking at the turf, the turf is spun. And what that helps is it gives the fiber more stability. Your turf fibers are, they call it a lazy fiber, it lays down. So after time, it, it lays down, and you have to keep brushing it to try to keep it up. But again, as soon as you play on it, it goes back down again. This turf, it stays up. The spiral helps keep it up, keeps, it gives it strength. It also helps make sure that there is less splash out. Not only is there more fiber, but the, the Helix also helps keep it in, so you don't have that splash out like you do with the other turf. It's also, if you felt the difference, it's a lot softer than your Field Turf. It's not as abrasive, right? And obviously, from the pictures you saw, it's definitely aesthetically more pleasing, because it has that lush, lush appearance. It looks like grass. When you get, when you step out on a turf field like this, when I was down in Dallas, it's amazing how like, that's really turf, and you step on it, and it feels nice and soft too. You can feel the difference on your knees. So these are just two ADs. So the AD at Rockwell, which is one of the, two of the turf fields I saw down in Dallas, you know, he, he bragged about it for a half an hour. I couldn't put everything he talked about, because he, he just talked too much. He was a really good, nice guy, but said we could call him with any questions he had. The AD up at Highland Park, so Highland Park is the only school in New Jersey right now that just installed Hellis turf. So I was on the phone talking with him for a little bit. He said that Hellis was very professional, very responsive, the turf looks amazing, they're very happy with it, they couldn't, they couldn't be, you know, feel much better about it. They said it was a great investment, so I would like to go up there and see it, but they're very pleased with it. The other piece to this puzzle is a shock pad. And a turf is measured, they use a GMAX test to measure, to make sure it's safe. Anything over 200 is considered not safe, it's like playing on concrete. So when a new, when a turf is installed, it, I think it's like, I think around 80 is what, what it should register. But over time, with rain washing away some of the crumb rubber, people taking it off on their clothes, I'm sure, you know, we've had all hot kids play on the turf, they come home and, you know, your, your house, it's like, what, what are these things? Well, it's part of our turf. So that's what a lot of turfs have. But what, another thing that Hellis uses is what's called a shock pad. And if you think about your carpets in your home, if you have a carpet, you have a pad underneath it, it makes it softer, makes it easier to, to walk on. Well, that's the same thing for this turf too. And they, they have a shock pad which goes underneath the turf, and it helps the GMAX. The, it absorbs the contact, like if somebody falls on it with their head, it helps absorb it, so it makes it safer. It lowers the GMAX value. So this is, this is what it basically looks like. Looks a little weird, but these little ribs help absorb the impact when somebody falls on it. So if you put the turf on top of this and then walk on it, you can feel the difference. It's, it's a lot different. When I was walking on the fields down in Dallas, again, I could feel it on my knees. It was, it was a lot nicer to walk on. So this, this shock pad is guaranteed for 25 years, and it also guarantees that you will pass your GMAX test for those 25 years, or they'll fix it. So basically, we're looking at two life cycles for this. So when we go to replace the turf again, and this is down, they keep this down, they'll replace anything needs to be replaced, but they'll, they'll check it out, test it, make sure it's okay, and then they'll put the turf back on it. So this only has to be purchased once, and it's good for 25 years. And again, it guarantees our shock test, our, our G test, our, the GMAX test. So it makes the turf safer, and it also is a nice insurance policy, like, we have this to make our playing surfaces safer for our athletes.
Trip, talk a little bit more about how the pad helps the turf last longer.
So if you look on, again, on the other side of the turf, a lot of your turfs are on either concrete or crushed stone. And over time, what happens is that back rubs against the, the concrete of crushed stone, and it breaks that little loop through there, and then the turf falls out. You got two blades that fall out, and that happens a lot. And you'll see it on a lot of the turfs, you'll see the bare spot areas. Again, that's the turf rubbing, breaking, breaks down again from the sun as well. But with the Hellis turf sitting in on this, it doesn't sit on anything abrasive, so it helps the turf last longer, so you don't have that breakage underneath, because it's not sitting on a hard surface that it's going to rub on, it's just sitting on the plastic here.
And it's not, it's not uncommon for turfs, and ours did it last year. At 10 years old, we had to do some maintenance to help it pass the G-Shock test this year. So this is, this provides that security that if something happened, they fix it and get it back to G-Shock passability.
Right. This, this, we're going to get it done, it's, it's called decompaction, we're going to do it each season now, because we won't pass otherwise. So we'll get it done before the fall, we'll be good for the fall, and then we'll get it done again in the spring, so it'll be good for the spring sports, and then we're going to have to replace. So when we start, first started this, we asked for quotes, and Hellis came back with an original quote back in back in January. For the turf, it was 718,000 plus the 115 for the shock pad, which totaled 834 and change. It took us a little while to get to where we are. And again, we really wanted to see some of the fields because this is a new product. So we finally got everything together. Obviously, inflation is hurting everything. Everything's going up. So the new quote they gave us on, a couple of weeks ago, it was 807,000 for the turf, 134 for the shock pad, which totaled 941. So I went back and forth with the guy and basically, he really wants to work with us. So they adjusted that quote a couple of days later and they are going to give us the turf and the shock pad for 845,000. So they're pretty much sticking to their original quote from January, which is a great deal. So if you look at it and if you remember back to the pictures, your Hellis fields, those fields I saw that were seven years old, they're, they're going to last for another five to seven years guaranteed. There's, they look amazing. They looked brand new when I was on them. So if we went by this, your first cycle, you would pay $845,000 and that should last you 12 to 14 years. We take care of it. Second cycle, without the pad, we're looking at 730. Pad is guaranteed again for 25 years, two cycles. So total, you're looking at 1.575 for two cycles and that should last you 24 to 28 years. So that's two turf cycles. FieldTurf, some of those fields are going to have to replace a lot sooner than they think. Thinking about the Robbinsville field that's five years old, it's shedding and falling apart. I'd be surprised if they made it to eight, but it is warranted. All turf is warranted to eight years. So they will make it to eight, but I'm not sure they're going to make it much longer than that. But even if they make it to 10, they're going to have to replace it. So you're basically looking at, if you go FieldTurf, you're going to have to replace it three times as opposed to the Hellis, which can have to replace twice. So the total, if you're replacing the FieldTurf field, is 1.48 and that's again, 24 to 30 years.
Yeah, but that's constant dollars. So the thing is you run, you know, when you, I'd likely guess that when you account for inflation.
Yeah, correct. That's right now. Yep, yep. But FieldTurf is going to go up too. And I will point out, I did reach out to FieldTurf again to get a new quote because that FieldTurf quote is from January. He did not get back to me. I can guarantee you, it is not 493 anymore. I guarantee you, it's a lot more.
Yeah, we were, we were a little bit disappointed in what we got out of the AstroTurf field that we have out there now. We thought it would definitely last at least 10 to 12 years and it started to really break down probably right around year eight.
Maybe before that.
Yeah, mid sevens, it started to really start to see the crumb rubber pouring through and the heavy traffic areas were really starting to be, with that black crumb rubber showing through because of deterioration of the, of the fiber.
Again, the two things that destroy turf are use. We have a lot of use on our turf field, but so do the fields down in Dallas. When I was down there walking on, they had kids on them down there doing all sorts of things. So we had to, they had to get off while we walked and I took some pictures. The other thing, the sun. Well, let me tell you something, the sun is not as hot here as it is in Dallas. It was hot. When I was there, it was 112. So, and it was blazing sun and those fields look perfect.
So quick question about the safety profile. So if you consider going with the bottom, you know, where we are now, what is the repair in addition to the replacement?
Sorry, what do you mean by the repair?
So you're saying, you were saying the wear and tear because of the GMAX testing, you had to come in and do some repair.
Yeah, so.
That's on top of this?
Correct, that would be on top of this. So it's a few thousand dollars each time they come out and decompack. I think it's like five, four or 5,000 to decompack it. But the GMAX test, they include in, in one of those too, for free.
I have a question. I guess, first question maybe for Bob. What did we budget?
We budgeted 834.
Okay. So we are right around the budget for the Hellis turf.
That's why Trip had to call them back.
Okay. The second question I had was maybe a little bit more complicated. I heard you mention sun is the enemy of the turf typically. What about cold in particular, ice? And the reason I'm asking is because they don't have that down in Dallas. By and large, sometimes they do, but they don't. So I'm wondering if Hellis has a track record in colder climates?
Denver and Ohio.
And they have, and how long, do you know how long they've had their turfs out in those areas?
Five or six years.
Five or six years. Have you seen that they still look fine?
Yep, yep. And the reason I didn't go to Ohio is because they didn't have lacrosse.
Okay. And then the other one, the warranty is that you mentioned it's eight years for the FieldTurf.
Eight years is standard for everybody.
So it's also eight years for Hellis?
I can actually help you with this one, Alex. For polymers like this, cold is not a problem.
Cold's not a problem.
It's ultraviolet radiation which degrades polymer.
So my question is about the maintenance. You mentioned the maintenance for the turf field. What kind of maintenance is required for Hellis? And do they, is that all covered in, or is that, would that be additional? I know you said if there was anything that they would come out and fix, if there's a problem. But what about, you know, there's a warranty issue or any other maintenance?
Warranty issues, any defection in the turf, they will fix. Anything that is maintenance, just your typical maintenance, take care of the field, our guys usually do. We can, you know, they will, they will, we can buy something where they'll come out each year and do it twice a year. That's extra money, but our guys, we have the equipment that we can, we can do, maintain our turf. We're basically just brushing. And when you brush, and I would like to get, there's like a metal piece that picks up all the metal in the turf. You'd be surprised, you know, what comes out of the turf. Bobby pins and trash and all that other stuff. But we have the brush to pick it up. If we just got the metal piece, we could pick up all the other, the metal that's in the turf too. Nails are in there sometimes. The craziest things are found in there. But our, our maintenance crew can do that.
Is it the same piece of equipment though? Because it's a different grade on the turf.
Same, yeah, same.
Same piece of equipment?
Anything else? Any other questions for Trip? Okay, thank you.
Okay, we are ready for our first public comment. Sessions, do we? Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You're asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record keeping. Oh, public comment is now open.
Deb, have you returned? She said she locked off.
Yes, I'm on.
Oh, there she is.
Okay, public comments are now closed. Do we have any items of old business? Okay. We're now going to look at the consent agendas marked as asterisk on your agenda items. And I need a motion and a second for approval.
Motion.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed or abstaining? Motion carries. All right, now for our committee updates. We'll start with finance. Bill?
Okay, thanks. So we met last week and most of our items were on the consent agenda. But I would like to have a motion to accept the proposal to spend the $845,000 for the Hellis construction turf field.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, thank you. You know, at the meeting, we talked about a number of capital projects going on, many, many capital projects and repairs and maintenance and those sorts of things. But most of the, all the things that were on the agenda for '21, '22 are well underway or finished. The tennis courts, the boilers at TMS and Hopewell Elementary, HVAC work at Stony Brook are all doing well. 2022, we talked a little about the 2022 and 23 projects. There are various items that we're working on and planning for, including Hopewell Elementary chiller repair fix. Still trying to figure out the best way to attack that one. And then we talked a little bit more about the more long-term projects for '22, sorry, '23, '24, '25. And later, some of those are, some more paving at the high school in Tollgate, the CHS boiler replacement. We have a bunch of roofs coming off 15-year warranty over the next several years. And then the big one is upgrades to HVAC at Timberlane Middle School. So there are a lot of pretty big items here. So we're starting to think through and plan how to accomplish these, you know, maybe in different ways and potential ways to fund them because I think our normal capital funding probably won't be able to cover all of the items that are currently on the list.
Yeah, that, so, you know, what Bill's saying is we, we have a plan that we keep looking at and modifying as, as time goes ahead. And what we're finding is some of the things we've identified, we found ways to do it in-house at a cheaper rate. We found different methods of doing the same thing that was, you know, it might be some, some newer technology that may work and do it better than what we originally thought. So we're trying to pick things off little by little with the money that we can put aside and trying to figure out the most economical way to do it. Sometimes we look at the beginning for the best way to do it with the newer technologies and being green, more green when we can. But sometimes the being green and doing it, you know, lead, to talk about LEED certified, you know, the highest, the highest value of certification, the highest, you can't do that. It's just too expensive. So we, you know, we relook at it and see if we can do it in a, in a better way that's not quite as expensive.
Bob, just one clarification for the, when we were talking about some of the roofs, I think it was at the high school and stuff, in terms of the 15-year warranty, those are not like full roof replacements. This is like refurbishment work to maintain the roofs within warranty.
Again, there's a, there's something that we could replace the roof, but Tom is investigating this new coating that you could put over top the existing roof without having to do a full tear off and redo. This would extend the life of the roof 20 years without having to do a full pull-off, so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, so for the motion, could we, we do that by voice by just regular?
Yeah, just a regular voice vote.
So all in favor of the motion?
Do we get a motion?
We did, yeah, yeah. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, motion passes. Thank you.
Okay. For personnel, we have a number of appointments, resignations, and, yes. Thank you.
So Jess is not here this evening, so I can give a little summary of tonight's personnel meeting. We did meet prior to this meeting across the hall. We reviewed personnel agenda where we have many of our new staff members. You'll see on the agenda, we do have a few transfers as well and many of our professionals. We're very happy with our administrative team in taking care of a lot of our open positions. They've done an amazing job and we met them all this morning, our new staff members, which was wonderful. In addition, we looked at the ECAs and for this month, mostly they are our Timberlane Fall Sports, the mentor teachers for our year one staff and the high schools. As noted in our meeting, pending the ratification of the HVEA MOA, those salaries will change once that occurs. We discussed the waiver of health benefits form, which is an annual approval form, an additional CSO request from Principal Riley, and an updated organizational chart for the district. That's it.
I just wanted to say a few words about item three, which is the appointment of Dr. Vicky Plitzes and Ms. Hannah Smith to the Assistant Superintendent title in addition to all the other things that they picked up during the last couple of years for COVID. I'm hoping that one of these three is my succession plan here. One of these three. But, but no, just in the roles that they've been doing, they deserve the title. They've done the work to procure the certificate now. And again, we're hoping to be preparing folks for the transition as they are younger than I to make that move. Yes, I hear you saying that, but that's the plan. Okay, so congratulations on a well-deserved appointment.
Okay, to approve all the role changes and assignments, we need to have a motion and a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Driver.
Yes.
Ms. Genovacy.
Yes.
Mr. Herbert.
Yes.
Mr. Mason.
Yes.
Mr. Resnick.
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki.
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano.
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Thorst.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and next we have Echo.
Hi, we met about two weeks ago and we had two agenda items to review. Ms. Heidi Kami, who is, oversees the Hopewell Valley Municipal Alliance and also does some community outreach for the district, presented the survey results from the Search Institute, which talked about whether students in the secondary level, so grade 612, assess their internal and external assets. And that was very telling and she will be coming, I believe, to the October board meeting to present the data. We also discussed a student who would like to conduct a research project about teacher's knowledge on dyslexia and how professional development impact their preconceptions or misconceptions on that. That was it.
Community relations?
Yeah, we, we met like two weeks ago. We're going to do, instead, we were planning on originally doing a insert in the Hopewell Express in September. We're actually going to do October, it'll be after school starts and we're kind of up against that. I think it'll be better and it'll be a better addition if we wait until October. So we're going to do that. We briefly went over, we're going to dive into it more at the next meeting, the climate survey results. So we're looking to do that. And then we briefly went over the goals for the year for the committee. That's it.
Thank you, sir. And just quickly on SCL committee, we didn't have a meeting in August. But just quickly to touch a point on what we covered in July, I, I just really want to acknowledge- to touch a point on what we covered in July, I, I just really want to acknowledge the response of the school district to some parents' requests for, as a support group, for people who have experienced loss over the last few years. So, just huge acknowledgement there. And again, there's work being done throughout, has been throughout the summer on getting the Character Strong program ready for launching in, in the fall. So, those were the two items for July, just wanted to bring them forward. And then with that, we'll move on to policy.
Okay. Can I get a motion to move the items up for first reading, please? Okay, so we've got a good list here. We had policy 0163 on board quorum. We had policy 8420 on emergency and crisis situations, policy and regulation 9320 for cooperation with law enforcement agencies, regulation 5751 sexual harassment of students, and policy 1648.15 record-keeping for healthcare settings in school buildings COVID-19. Okay, so, just to highlight a couple of the more interesting ones, emergency and crisis situations, this one we've been working for over a little bit the last few years. Mainly, it now is being revised to include some things in current practice, for example, certain circumstances, if we have a emergency evacuation, within certain parameters, we can go ahead and take credit with that for some of our monthly requirements for, in school, so we don't have to go ahead and have a supplemental fire drill, for example. It also includes an addition about how we do tabletop reviews and security drills in coordination with local law enforcement, emergency personnel, so they're familiar with the schools, they know what to do when we have those situations. Let's see. Regulation 5751 on sexual harassment of students, you'll recall, a month or two ago, we had an analogous regulation up related to sexual harassment of staff. So, this is the analogous regulation covering students. And the one, policy 1648.15, this is a new one, which relates to, as Dr. Trese had noted, what we have to do going forward in terms of how we're handling COVID-19 and how we're dealing with cases and record-keeping and how we approach going forward. So, the reason for that is that we're abolishing the prior policy, which was related to COVID, which dealt with quarantining and such. So, we'll get to that one in the next phase. So, these are, have been reviewed by policy committee and we're recommending their approval for first reading. So, if we, this would be a, just a voice vote. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain, against? All right, thank you. I guess I have to move the, the next one separately. So, can I please have a motion to move item two, which is the abolishment of policy 1648.14, Safety Plan for Healthcare Settings in School Buildings COVID-19?
Second.
Great. So, as I just mentioned, this reflected our prior policy that now has been revised per state guidelines and this is being abolished and the one we just approved is, we'll wind up taking its place after second reading. So, all in favor?
Roll call, this is a roll.
Oh, this is roll call, that's right, sorry, Bob.
Ms. Genovacy?
Yes.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Thorst?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
And Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Can I get a motion to move the policies up for second reading, please?
Motion.
Okay, here we have policy 2415, Every Child Succeeds, and, let's see, regulation 2460, Compensatory Special Education Related Services, and policy 3233, Political Activities. We discussed these for first reading last month, there've been no changes by, since that time, so we're recommending them for approval. So, get a roll call, please, Bob.
Mr. Herbert?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mr. Resnick?
Yes.
Mr. Sewicki?
Yes.
Ms. Williams Galliano?
Yes.
Ms. Driver?
Yes.
Ms. Genovacy?
Yes.
Ms. Lynn Thorst?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you, everyone. Yep.
All right, so we are going to review the board calendars and so I believe I need a?
Motion.
Motion to, and a second?
Motion.
All right. All in favor?
We gotta, we gotta pick dates.
I was ready.
Okay, so, let's start.
Just for reference, the board meeting is on the 12th.
Okay, why don't we start with personnel? Anyone on the Personnel Committee?
When? Yeah, that's good, that works.
So, what works for finance during that week? Obviously, the Monday is Labor Day.
I'm pretty good that week. Tuesday, Wednesday?
Either, either way, Wednesday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yeah.
That's fine. Jackie, good for you?
Yep, that's good, thanks.
Are you trying to do it at five?
Yeah.
Can we do it at four?
That might be tough for.
And then can we do Wednesday instead?
Yeah.
Because I already have a five o'clock, that's hard to do.
I can do Wednesday.
Deb, can you move, I mean, can you do Wednesday?
Yeah, thanks.
All right, nine, seven, at five o'clock.
Okay. Tom?
For the education?
Yeah.
Wednesday, the seventh. Yeah.
Wednesday at all?
I could do earlier than that.
Five.
Six on the seven? SEL.
SEL? It works first, that's.
Yeah, I should be good, the only, sometimes in the morning gets up if I, like, court pops up, but besides that, I can do.
So, the, the ten?
Policy. Oh, come.
Communications?
How's, how's that Thursday? Afternoon usually works better for, like I said, mornings usually are good, like every once in a while, something pops up court and I just have to run over, that's when I get jammed up. Oh, yeah, you're back to school. So, I could do later, afternoon work, like, three, four? I could do four?
Four.
You want to do four? Does that work? The eighth at four?
Policy? Was that, was that settled, I'm sorry?
So, we have the meeting on Friday.
I'm good with that, that, that works very well.
Do you as well? Eight AM, so we're joined?
Yeah, which, which would you prefer? The second or the ninth?
Second or the ninth?
You know what, probably the second would be better so that we can, because we usually have questions for the Board Attorney and things like that, so give us more time.
Second at eight AM, all right.
Board Attorney, you be there?
Are we gonna be there?
No, we ain't.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Just, it just gives us a week to do follow-ups and things like that.
The second or the ninth?
Oh, right. Sorry, sorry, Adam.
Okay, we're good?
Yep.
All right. Everyone, all approve?
All is in favor.
All is in favor or?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Abstain or?
Oppose.
Oppose.
Motion carries.
Okay, for new business, we have the Board Self-Evalu.
Yes, Deb, Madam Chair, would you like me to speak to that?
Yep.
Yes.
She said you want to speak to it.
Before I address that, Mr. Colavita, I wanted to ask you if you'll be sending out information about the annual New Jersey School Board Association Convention that's coming up in October?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll be getting more information out to board members on that soon. I believe it is in person this year in Atlantic City.
Yes, we'll put something in the green notes this week.
You know, as good of attendance to that as possible, even if you can only make it for one of the days or one of the evenings, but it's our first time being back in person in, in what, four years now?
Three, I think.
Okay. But we'll, we'll be sending more information out about that soon, so keep an eye out for that, everyone.
It's going to be, Deb.
As for the Board Self-Evaluation, I hope to kick that off in September. For the benefit of the new members, it's a process that's similar to the CSA evaluation in that we have a system that's already set up for us, a process through School Boards Association. We will be sending out a link to you that you will go through and you will fill out information according to specific categories and then all the results will be compiled and we will review the information. Of course, if you have any questions, you can just let me know during, during the process. We will probably send that link out through the green notes and I'm guessing that I should have that to you probably by the second week of September or so. And I think that was all that I had. Thank you.
Deb, can you share the October dates for?
I have them here.
Oh, you do?
So, the dates are the 24th, 25th, and 26th of October. It's all day the 24th, all day the 25th, and a half a day on the 26th. At those, at the conference, they have a variety of courses, action labs, things that you can learn about any of the current topics in education from facilities, business and finance, SEL, you know, anything that's going on in the school district, there'll be presentations that you can attend to learn more about that.
Okay.
And we will have, they make hotel rooms available for those who are able to stay overnight or for multiple nights.
Monday and Tuesday only this year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the second public comment. Members of the public are invited to address the board on any matter for a maximum of three minutes during this portion of the meeting. You are asked to state your name, address, and municipality. In response to your comments, the Board of Education may respond or direct the superintendent to do so. The board may also opt to take the matter up at a future meeting so that the matter is researched by the district administration. Members of the public who intend to participate in public comment, we ask that you sign in prior to speaking. This will assist us with our record-keeping. The floor is now open.
Kate Hamm, I have a couple of different questions here. One of the things I wanted to address, Dr. Trese, your presentation at the beginning mentioned a way for parents to get involved within their schools and within the community, the DEI community or the DEI committees and a few others. I'd be interested to find out, will each school be outreach-ing to parents, especially those who have transitioned into Timberlane, those who have transitioned into Central High, about joining and becoming a part of those committees? Another question I heard earlier from this side of the room was regarding getting a list of the classes which were canceled as a result of employees not being available, staff not being able to be gotten. I heard that the board was going to get that list. I'd be interested for the public to also receive that list preferably this evening so that we know what is not running as a result of lack of staffing. Looking through the agenda tonight, I have to say I'm very disheartened to see a lot of the resignations and staff leaving our district. A lot of them are paras, I can say. I am actually embarrassed to see the salaries of paras in this district. If you've not been in a classroom with a para, you're missing out. They support students, they support teachers, they support the entire building. And to know that our paras are leaving for school districts, and I will say it, as in Hamilton Township, they are leaving for Lawrenceville, they are going elsewhere because they are paid better, with better benefits, and respected more, is extremely disheartening to me. I sat here tonight and didn't watch anybody bat an eye at $845,000 for turf fields. I hope that you all have that same passion when bargaining is happening, when they're looking at contracts for all of our staff who are up and leaving. I hope you have that same passion when we're looking at things needed for our students with special needs, for the athletes, for our diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives here. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kat Hogan and I'm a resident of Pennington, well, Hopewell Township. I have a, first of all, I do want to echo Ms. Hamm's sentiment regarding our power professionals. I have two children with IEPs and I honestly don't know how they got through their elementary school experience without the amazing power professionals who supported them in the room. It allowed the teacher to sort of be working with all of the students, but it allowed for integrated classrooms for kiddos like mine who exceed in some areas but not in others, but, and so pulling them out doesn't make complete sense, having that power in the room to be able to work with the individual children who are struggling. And even the kiddos without the IEPs always benefited when there was a power in the room because it really gave them the opportunity to have some of the individualized attention. And that's one of the things that makes this district so remarkable is what we offer in terms of special education and how, as you can see, making it better for the people down here makes it better for everybody. down here makes it better for everybody, so I wanted to echo that sentiment. And I had a question regarding one of the policies for first reading tonight, it was the Cooperation with Law Enforcement Agencies, R 9320, in the portion that talks about the responsibilities of the school district for notifying, notifying parents and caregivers in instances of law enforcement interviews. Item C under there, I don't understand what that means, in all other instances, school authorities shall permit law enforcement authorities to determine whether or when a student's parent should be contacted, so if I could get some clarification about, like, what that looks like, like, practical application of that looks like, I'd like that a lot. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Heather Mott. Oh, that was really loud. I am here to talk about the turf field. So I emailed Trip, I don't know how many times, was that all, you were on it? Paulette, very helpful, always, you were on it. I didn't get back an answer that was okay, and I know you're looking at me a little odd. Turf, Texas, I don't care. Really? I got back, there are no other teams surrounding us, yes, there are. Yes, there are, he wants to do the high school only, and that's, it's not okay. My kid said on a track field, sorry, this is hard to talk into, with a para, love the paras, not saying anything bad about the paras, but just with a para. 13, not okay, it's not okay, and I think and I hope all of you would agree, 13, his twin sisters with eight other girls, you know, like, it's not, it's not okay. So, turf field, great, let's ramp up a unified team. Like, tonight, where's Trip? He walks out and waves to me. I don't know if you noticed, I had to walk out of the room, I couldn't believe that, could not believe that, it just says a lot, and I hope he's still in his office and can hear me. Every child succeeds, really? Really? Nurture the unique talents of each individual. Talk to Charlie, tell Charlie the hut. Okay? See you tomorrow.
Any additional?
To Ms. Hamm, the principals will be reaching out to parents and inviting you to the D E I committees, I'll make sure that I remind them of that, so the folks that are just joining. You should also email their principals if you're interested, you can do that as well, but I'll make sure that they do it outreach. I cannot give you a list of, I don't want to try to give a list of the classes that have been collapsed and maybe not running, but I can say right off the top of my head, Chinese is one of the ones we're struggling with. So we had to collapse the sections in 6th grade, some at the high school, we had to collapse physics, although physics is still being offered, and some math classes, so we could talk about those, but it's like a section here and there, but Chinese has been the big one, where we were not able to offer that. And American Sign Language was another. Finding someone to teach that has been, it's very difficult.
Yes, we had to collapse Chinese 6th at the, at the middle school, because we couldn't find a part-time teacher, but all the other Chinese classes are running, and then we could not fill American Sign Language.
The paras are in negotiation now, so hopefully we'll have a better answer about that, we do recognize that, you know, our paras are not paid as well as some of the other districts, but that, that is the next negotiations. Do you want to talk, speak to that?
And, and just one thing, there are 18 paras being appointed on today's agenda, there were, I believe, five that are leaving, and not all of them are leaving for other districts, they might be leaving for other ventures in their life.
Thank you for that. There was a question about the law enforcement interview, that is in the policy that's given to us by the state, that's mandatory, we can't sort of, I don't think we can take that out, we can, we can talk to Paul Green about that, I'm looking at my board secretary, but we could always add to language, we really, I don't think we can subtract from the language. In this district, we don't have police officers interview kids without their parents, they won't do it, they just won't, so that's not something that we allow to happen here to begin with. I guess we could, we could explore if we could add that language in, but I don't think we can take anything out. Yes, understood, but we don't, and they won't even without parents being contacted first. And then the Special Olympics Unified Team, we do have a meeting with Ms. Mott, and we'll speak with her about that tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, the session is, or, closed. All right, so we need a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session, and we will be discussing personnel matters, HIBs, and no action is going to be taken at this. All in favor? Motion?
Aye.
No, she said second. Come on, man, I'm finally getting it right.